All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to June 23rd, 2025 Board Select Meeting. We had a non-public with the Puller Works Director about a potential hire for the transfer station. And leads us to now at 6:30. And I'd ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just take a quick second to welcome the two board members. Jack Beardmore.
Thank you.
And Ben Goodwin from right over here. Appreciate them and everyone else that came forth to volunteer for this position. And good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All righty, with that, public comment.
Could I ask you, I beg your indulgence here. I took your words you used the other day for the opening of the public comment.
Yeah.
In terms of counseling people how they should behave. I also added an extra paragraph below as a remedy for those people that feel they can't speak. They still have an opportunity to mail. So do you have permission like to read this?
Sure, you can read it as public comment. And I think as a board, we probably should go over it before we make it up.
Sure. Well, I was just gonna try it out for this thing.
Yeah, I think right now under public comment should be done as public comment. And then as a board, we can discuss if.
Oh, okay.
Is that all right?
For me?
If you would like to read it as public comment, I have it right there.
I'd like to read it.
Okay, go ahead.
Prefix for Select Board Meeting Public Comment. The Ware Select Board shall moderate public comment session in order to maintain appropriate civil discourse. No impugning, slandering, vilification, maligning of the public contractors, committee, board members, town employees shall be tolerated. Should there be a compelling issue that requires a select board's attention that is outside the civil discourse, please write or send a letter or email to the Ware Select Board for appropriate consideration.
Thank you. And that was, just read his public comment. And we can work on, we can discuss on their correspondence later if we'd like. Is anyone else for public comment?
How you doing, gentlemen? Naomi. Matt Beeler, 41 Meadow Drive. As some of y'all may know, I did apply for one of the seats previously. I'm speaking as a resident, not an applicant. I was severely disappointed with the behavior of individuals during that process. I thought it was just wrong. We're all grown people. And I think that behavior like that in a public arena, when you're applying for a town position, is unacceptable. And for a state rep to behave as they did is also unacceptable. It's just not right. That ain't got nothing to do with whether or not I was chosen for a seat. And it's nothing personal. It's just individuals' behavior. I think that's just not okay for us to act like that as grown people. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I got two issues now. I came in with one, but I have two. I would caution this board to pass that before your legal counsel, what you just read. Because you're restricting people's First Amendment right to speech. Now, whether you like it or not, and I'm not gonna do it, and I know people don't like it, you don't want to hear it, but people can come in and they can call you anything they want. And if they don't like the tax collector, they can call the tax collector whatever they want. That's just the way it is. So if you don't want to get into a First Amendment issue with the town, I highly suggest you just pass that by your legal counsel before you implement it. I want to talk to you about something that is way in advance of budget season. But it's contemporaneous with the holiday. And it's this issue of not funding Fourth of July celebrations. I don't know why there's such a big problem with this. I watched the meeting online. And I know people were saying that, you know, let it continue to be volunteerism and donations and this and that. And I think that's flawed logic simply because you could do that for anything. There's nothing in the law that says you have to have a fire department. Nothing says you have to have a police department. This town doesn't have to have one. If we're gonna do everything by donations, you could do that too. Now, does that make sense? Of course, it doesn't make sense. But I think it also doesn't make sense that this town thinks that it can't afford $11,000 in a $9 million budget, which is .001 percent. One one-thousandths of a percent of your budget. Fourth of July is about celebrating this country. That's why you people, I don't mean you people. That's why you folks get elected, because of the way this country was set up. That's why I could get to come in here and complain to you because of the way the country was set up. That's worth celebrating. The Fourth of July celebration that we had, the patriarch celebration, you know, can benefit everybody. I mean, if you don't participate in it, it's your own fault. It's open to everybody. It's not like it's just for seniors or just for kids or, you know, it's a, that road's gonna get paved over there, not my road. It benefits everybody. And I think it's important, as important as when you stand up and you say you do a pledge allegiance to that flag to start this meeting, I think it's just as important to do that at this time of the year when we're celebrating the birth of our country. And so I'm talking to you about this tonight because I want you to think, I'm hoping you'll think about it. Not only, you know, this past weekend we had our celebration, but there's more celebrations coming up in the next two weeks with Fourth of July and surrounding towns. So I'd like you to think about that. It's, you know, it's an opportunity for the town to just kind of display itself to everybody else, right? The parade, you get Cub Scouts, you get businesses, you get things that people are just interested in. They display what their interests are. And so, and it's also, I think, it's the one thing, when you think about all the political divisions we have, whatever your persuasion is, seems like there's one thing that we can agree on. We're all in the country that we're all born in or came here to become a citizen in. And we should be able to celebrate that. So I want you to think about two things. First, I want you to think about this year. If you have leftover money, I want you to think about dedicating $11,000 for next year's Fourth of July celebration. Secondly, I want you to consider putting it in your budget. I don't know why it ever came out of the budget, but it got out of there somehow. I'd like you to consider putting it back in. It's miniscule money. And I know even dollar is money. I value money. But for the return you get on this, bringing people together in the center of town and letting them interact with each other for a common purpose, seems like it's worth it. Now, you get your vote. 976 people voted no to appropriate $0. 796 voted yes. So the noes won. That's a double negative. That means a majority of people in this town want fireworks. It's right there. It's all the justification, all the justification you need to either allocate leftover funds or put it in your budget. It's right there in black and white. So again, I, just think about it. Think, you know, we're in the season here. Think about it and think about what you did this weekend, what you might do with the Fourth of July. Your job here as selectmen is not just to come in and rub a stamp, say, well, you know, they voted no. It's to lead. It's to lead. And if you believe in something, you should do it. And if you don't believe in it, say that too. So those that want to can take care of that at the voting booth. But have an open discussion about it and just lead on this issue. I'm hoping that we can get this town back on track, get it in the budget so we don't have to deal with this anymore. You can still have the committee, and you can still have the, you should still have the committee do it because they do a fantastic job, the volunteers. But they can still raise money on the side to increase that so they can have better fireworks or more activities. In any event, I think that you folks have a responsibility, if you feel like I do, you have a responsibility to take charge of this. Don't put in a warrant article because you know what happens. The only people that are gonna go to that meeting are the ones that don't want it. But you got the evidence right here that the town supports it. They're just not coming to the session where it gets put down by a handful of people. Thank you very much.
Frank, any other public comment? No, thanks. No.
Sure.
No.
All righty. Just move on to Department Head Committee. Do we have anything for that?
Matt, you're here for the bylaws. Did you have anything for?
Bylaws and representing Park for James.
Okay, did you have anything for committee items?
I, on, I can talk about Energy Committee if you want.
I just, I just wanted to make sure I knew who you was here for.
Yeah, I'm here for both.
You want to do an Energy Committee letter? Yeah, we got, yeah, usually do that. So I guess that's that for that then. Well, Park bylaws. Here.
I believe you all have a copy of the final version of our bylaws. Something we worked really hard on. We had it approved for a while. We know things came up, you know, more important than approving these. But we're hoping that tonight would be the night we get these approved so we can start operating with a little bit of framework.
The only thing that was left, my recollection was, spoke to trying to figure out who actually established, and we couldn't quite find that. And it was up to us to decide if that was to hang these up or not, really. That's really all there was left to talk about.
That's my understanding. And I believe, my understanding, last time I spoke to James, was that we were going to leave it as established by vote of the Ware Town Meeting pursuant to RSA 35-B while we're continuing to research.
Paragraph B, 1B, if you look at the old draft to the new draft. The old draft did say in 1984 pursuant to. We took out in 1984 and just left it pursuant to, which is what you have in front of you now for approval.
And so since there weren't a date, we do know that it was established by vote?
It was established by vote. We just haven't been able to find the right year. And in 84, we went back to the time in 84. And 84 was when they first budgeted money for Chase Park. It wasn't to establish the recreation. That was done because Howard Einison was part of that, which is where you got Einison Field many, many years ago. So we just haven't been able to continue backwards enough to find. But it certainly was established, to my understanding, by town meeting because there's an RSA that governs it. I just, we didn't get.
Yeah, we haven't been able to pin it down.
Personally, you know, I hear from James all the time. He has put a lot of work into this. And we've kind of, you know, required this from all the committees and commissions in town. You guys have, you guys have worked on that request requirement. So I, I'm good with the way it's written. Now, James has briefed us a number of times about it. And we've had him kick the can down the road a few times to try and try to find the year. So I, I'm okay with voting in the bylaws as written.
I just have a question.
Sure.
On 2B.
Yes, sir.
A five and a 10-year plan. What's the, what difference between a five-year plan and a 10-year plan?
Just looking further down the road, sir. That was recommended early in the process. We just kind of picked two years to create at least a goalpost, right? Where are we looking at? Where would we like Park's direction to be in five years? Where would we like to be in 10 years?
The only reason I question, I raised the question is, CIPs are set up six years in advance.
Okay.
So just a thought. I mean, I'm not asking to change it. I'm just trying to figure out why. And what would this plan look like?
So.
What structure would it be? A spreadsheet or would it be a narrative written with a spreadsheet backing it up a lot?
At this time, undetermined. We know we'd be looking at what are the field requirements for us in five years based on past year's information, based on information we're receiving from WAC and from the schools. The Junior Generals program has exploded since they started it. And they keep asking us for more field use. We honestly have to schedule our sports and spread it out to minimize field damage because they're being so used and we have so little usable fields in town. So that's one specifically, one of the things we're trying to look at is where does this whole program look at in five years? The tennis courts is another major issue for us. They are on their second top coating. It cannot be done again. So we're trying to see, do we pursue full replacement, trying to get another repair and process? And we would make it as a presentation, probably to Board of Select first and then to the town and speak at, this is the kind of money that we need to spend to keep up with the demand from the town.
Yeah, I know, and I, I worked on the CIP for years. And one of the hardest problems is coming up with a, sort of like a schedule on what's driving the usage and what the utility rate of these are. Now, nobody's gonna play out there at 3 o'clock in the morning. So, but the question is, having some idea of the current use that you're currently, and then where you want to go off that, I think.
Yes, sir. Those are numbers we put together in the past 12 months. And now, now in the down season, we are looking to look at those numbers better and start formulating that plan. Right now, it's summer season. And we are slammed with just keeping everything open and making sure everything is okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment or answer to questions?
Do you want a motion to accept?
Oh, if nobody else can, Bruce.
To that discussion, right?
All righty.
Motion to accept the Ware Park Recreation Commission bylaws?
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Discussion?
I'm ready to discuss, but yes, discussion.
Well, discussion has to be second. Anyways, I think it's well done. I don't know what it looked like before. And part of the problem with having bylaws is if they get put on the shelf, it just takes up room on the shelf. The real question, are people going to embrace this and go forward? I think it's gonna produce a very nice, high-quality plan and justification for any budget you request and any capital.
Anyone else? So the motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming in.
So then you have three responses via email for your next item and one in a sealed envelope.
All right, next item is the open bid for horse sheds behind the town hall. To repair the, Mr. Repairman Roof. So we got coupled by email here. The first one is from Walker Industries. And the scope of work total was $18,232. That was to remove existing layer shingles, dispose the debris, install inch-to-quarter custom face rip edge, install roofing underlayment, install ridge cap, install architectural shingles color of choice. And that's what comes up to $18,232.
You say it, when you say underlayment, is that like a plywood or a?
I'm guessing it's a lot of area.
And a rooftop guard underlayment or something? It says, install roofing underlayment over subroof is what it is.
Yeah.
I think a lot of area.
And then it said the extra, which was the little shed, what's that, Shay?
Oh, the tramp house?
I don't know, it says extra items, little shed, 1560.
Yeah.
So the tramp house was part of this?
Well, yeah, it was on the RFP.
So the next bid was by Building Stronger Together, is that right?
Is that the one you opened?
No. And it looks like their base bid is $46,310. An alternate to fully paint, full shed paint for another $6250. Was that in there? No. So we're gonna go with $46,310.
Preservation and preservation.
We don't say anything else, you know?
$46,310. Walker Industries. What was their base, Bruce? Before the tramp house, $18,232.
Are we doing sightings as well?
No.
I thought this was just the roof.
It is. Just in trim. That's what I thought. And we got one sealed bid. That's Target New England Historical Restorations. Naomi, do you have a copy of the RFP?
Grandpa's holding on it.
I was looking for, they got nothing on here about replacing rotted roofboards.
Yeah, it says, you have to do a scope of the.
Yeah, work on these.
Try to scope work on that, does talk about.
Yeah, I know. So Target New England Historical Restorations, total proposed price is $39,815.
How many square feet is this roofing? Do you have any idea?
I think it's.
What's that? I thought you said.
Yeah, I didn't say it on one of them. But I was looking at North Peak. This one underneath Bruce's thing that says North Peak.
Oh, that was stuck together, my apologies. Thought you said three, man, I saw two of them. So the third one is from North Peak Construction Contracting. And it appears that their total bid price is $28,837.22.
Check it out.
Was that $28?
Right to the penny.
28837?
28837.
Okay, thank you.
Pass them both ways, or you done look this one?
Yes, sir. You're right, there's nothing in here about replacing rotten.
There isn't. Which is.
Rafters or anything. It's.
Don't any rafters, there's nothing broken. We're just being.
Well, any of the, as it said here, any roofboards beneath the shingles. So this proposal, I just want to.
They just gotta strip and shingle, they don't want.
Strip and shingle, they don't want to do any of the other work.
So I think the scale mark between these.
They say nothing.
It's not mentioned in here at all.
Them's talking about.
That's, that's my concern about this one.
Yeah, mine too.
This would be Walker Industries.
It's funny because when they came up to look at it before, the first time, a couple of years ago now, probably, I don't know, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
They went around and they said, oh, anything rotted, they take care of.
They didn't write it in their proposal.
But you could be the, I mean, there's a huge difference, but you were talking 30 or 28.
It's $10,000 between the first and second.
Yeah.
And there's $10,000 difference between.
It's not gonna cost $10,000 to replace six or eight boards.
Right.
Well, there's, in this one here, it says fascer and soffit, $6,000. Just for the soffits. I don't know if they're, I don't even know if they're even bad or not. The roof is 16.
Well, the proposal asks you to replace all of it.
Yeah.
Does it?
Yeah.
Here's, here's a copy.
What's the breakdown of that?
Yeah, the RFP asks for it all to be replaced.
Replacing roofboards.
Yeah, it does.
I mean, I keep looking for another page here. But that's, that's literally all they're talking about is the roof. But you get to choose what color you want on that one.
Yeah, see these two? Jack would like to see that one.
Do you have another copy of the RFP or just that one?
That's close to the price of the other one, the roof.
Yes.
So is it, is Walker Industries, is that the one from Vermont?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, they're the ones that, I didn't know they changed their name, but they're the ones that put the roof on the Stone Memorial Building, the copper roof. They're also the ones that kept the bell tower on the.
I want to say is, they don't have any soffit work in there or siding. The cost of the roofing is about the same as one of those other ones, a $28,000 one. So $18,000 seems to be consistent for the roof, the actual roof, if you will. $39,000 one is probably high, but.
And this bid doesn't address one of the pieces of siding that wants, that they want replaced? Oh, yeah, it does, okay.
How much money were we, do we have to work with?
Well, actually, it was being done by the historic society.
Historical society, we really like some say in it. Yeah, that's what's happened with the whole thing.
Of course.
I only know the word by Walker Roofing only, and it was Walker Roofing. It's changed names now, Walker Industries. But I just know that the stone building was done. There's been no issues except one, one calf blew off in a high, high wind. We had it cut a few years ago.
This Walker.
Do you understand, stand up for this here, Bruce?
The only, the only thing they're doing is the roof. Where the other two are doing soffits. soffits, fascers with a specification, so these guys are not compliant with the specification. And the price for the roof is eighteen thousand. The twenty-eight thousand dollar one has eighteen thousand for the roof, with ten thousand for the rest of the stuff, soffits, uh, whatever else they're citing they gotta put on or whatever.
Yeah, but we don't have thirty-five thousand dollars.
But I'm telling you, this eighteen thousand is, doesn't meet this specification. If you said just do the roof, these would be compliant. This says do a whole bunch of stuff beyond the roof, and there's a twenty-eight and a thirty-six.
Yeah, thirty-nine.
I have thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine and a twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, twenty-six.
Yeah, thirty-nine, eight.
Uh, forty-six.
Forty-six.
Six, yeah.
So the twenty, what's the other one?
Twenty, twenty-nine essentially, this one.
I mean, the price difference, I, I would hate to make, make a motion on any of them, obviously, I mean.
The other one.
Watch out and see if they attended.
There's a wild discrepancy here. I mean, that's, that's a huge.
We had a wild one last time we put it out, too. We had thirteen thousand on one, good for thirty days, and we had another one that was like twenty-three or four thousand, I think, right, Naomi?
This Walker's not describing that they're gonna do any of the other work other than the shingles.
Correct, and the shingles are pretty consistent with this one, here was the price for this one.
PC, is it PC, that's a forty-six thousand.
Uh, that's the other one. Building Stronger Together.
Building Stronger, I didn't see that one yet.
That's the forty-six thousand.
Where's the other one?
That's this one. That's thirty-nine eight.
North Peak.
Where's the forty-six?
Right here.
You got it?
They haven't, you haven't seen the forty-six?
I haven't seen it yet.
I'm gonna pass this down.
Please.
So this is, these, this, this one here, the thirty-nine thousand, appears to be compliant to the requirement. Roofboards, fascers, siding northeast, uh, even have some place on the southeast, seventeen feet wide, repage.
Well, first of all, we don't have thirty-eight thousand, forty thousand, whatever.
I'm just saying, what's the requirement?
But if Walker's not gonna do the work required, I don't think we wanna go that way without finding out.
Yeah, I think we just need a phone call to find out.
See if that was meant. If, if it's not, and it's extra, then we have to go out to rebid again, because now they're, they can open in public, so.
Right.
And giving everybody's number.
Yeah.
Right.
They're gonna do the work for that eighteen two thirty-two, then.
That'd be a good deal.
Yeah, be a good deal.
Come back and we'll, per the RFP, yeah.
Yeah.
Have them put it in writing, and.
Yeah.
I'd be willing to discuss it again, but.
Okay.
And, and I, I hear you, there's, you don't have the money for the rest of it, but if they're not, they don't wanna put shingles on the old crappy boards.
Well, it's not the roof, it's the boards on the side of the building that are bad. Right now, as far as I know.
Those bad boards are the roof, too.
Well, I looked at it pretty close one day, and I went up when it was pouring out, I mean pouring buckets, and I only saw two small areas dripping. And it was a slow drip, so I don't know that anything on the roof is rotted. There's, there's really no way of telling until you get the shingles off. But I'll.
I see the underside of it.
I'll be happy to give them a call.
I mean, what's the rest of the board think of that? They got a call. There isn't money enough to go with another one, otherwise I would say that they didn't meet the requirements.
Right.
They'll go with the next bidder, but if there isn't the money for it, then.
I think it makes good sense to ask.
Yeah.
What's it, if they truly mean just the roof.
Right.
Then eighteen thousand, I don't know how many square it is, but, uh, labor costs a lot of money these days.
Right.
The other ones appear to be compliant, based on what I'm looking at real quick.
I think the, the two that you left in the email, I sent out three emails of pictures and a bunch of things, and, um, a couple of them came out and looked at it, I think. I, I didn't send an email of pictures to.
I think I got everything.
Can I get a copy of the Walker one, so I can call him and a copy?
Just go with you, too?
And I think I have the RFP still on my computer.
Oh, there was a copy down here. Do you have a copy of that?
Of the RFP?
Yeah.
I think I still have it, but if you're gonna make a copy of the Walker thing, make me a copy of that, too, if you could, and then I'll call him tomorrow morning and ask him, because if they're not, not gonna do it, I mean, we gotta get a roof on it no matter what, because we're gonna have a major problem over there. I know that their work has been really good in town, because they've done two bell towers, they've done the town hall, they've done Clinton Grove, they've done, and then they've done the roof on, uh, the Stone Memorial Building, they did that in twenty-ounce cop, uh, twenty-ounce copper, so.
Well, I definitely think they're, they're certainly reputable enough, I just, I wonder if they missed part of the bid.
Yeah.
If they didn't, then good, but.
Yeah.
Doesn't appear that's what it's written.
It doesn't look like they included the, the additional work, it's strictly the roof.
The sucky thing is, is now they can't say, well, can you give us that number, because now they.
Right.
You know, if it was me bidding, I'd be twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
That's right, yeah.
Exactly.
Right, we can't do that, we can't do that, no. It'll have to go back out to bid, yeah.
And then it's gonna be higher, because cards are on the table, so hopefully, um, where I stand, anyway, there's no decision tonight, and Sherry wants.
When is your next meeting? Is it next week or the week after?
We're two off, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, hang your calendar. We're, we're, the next two, I think, we're off, I believe.
Because of the fourth.
Oh, because of the fourth.
It's the fourteenth, then, is the next?
So, I asked the young guy, she comes in, I believe, so, yeah, just passing it out.
I'll email you with an answer, one way or the other, so you'll know ahead of time, but.
Okay.
Back, and, and if it's the fourteenth, I'll make.
Yeah, I'll just the fourteenth. Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, okay, I'll write it down.
So I see you right there.
Thank you.
I'll call you tomorrow, I'll let you know. Well, the notice, this is, it was sent a year ago. And it also says that the target date to commence work is summer of twenty-four, aren't we in the twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it said that they sent by such and such a person on May sixth of twenty twenty-four.
I think they sent the wrong bid to us.
Yeah, I think.
It says a horse barn.
So I, I, now that brings us to a question now, do we wanna send it out to rebid? What's the storage?
It doesn't make sense that it's a year old.
Well, we can't take that.
Just good as a year old.
I'd be comfortable with asking it and to qualify what they bid.
Right.
If they, if they come back and said, yeah, we bid the whole job.
But what does the finish date say, though?
Well, no, they're gonna commence summer of twenty-four.
Yeah, I think it's incomplete.
They made a mistake.
They could have two horse barns, I think.
They could have two and sent the wrong one, I don't know. I'll call them tomorrow.
There's clearly a, an error there somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I'll call tomorrow and find out.
I know, I know, I guess we can discuss it, I don't know if we can accept it, I mean, I, there's no way that little bids I did a year late would be accepted. It's not the right date, nothing.
When did we ask for it?
Well, we're in twenty-five.
Well, it says.
When did we ask for it?
Two weeks ago.
Obviously, either they sent you the wrong one, or they, somebody is a year behind.
Well, the contract they're asking you to sign says that they're gonna commence work September, uh, summer of twenty twenty-four. It's highlighted.
They must have just put, maybe, I don't know, maybe it's another bid, or maybe they just put this in.
But if we let them change their document, then that's the same as rebid.
I would.
That's correct.
You know, I think that it would be much clearer if we said rebid.
I think we got.
Because I don't think we can monkey with this thing, even though it'd be interesting to find out.
That's what I was saying, I don't think we can, because if they change their document or date, then that's changing the bid.
Yeah, I agree with that, if they.
It's too bad, because if it is truly eighteen thousand, it sucks.
Well, this says printed date, six eighteen, twenty twenty-five on it.
Right, but see when it says sent, and then look at the next page, when they gotta start work.
That must've been from, was that from last year?
Yeah.
When you put that out to bid.
Yeah, they didn't bid on it, though.
They didn't? Did they do it the year before that? Why would they have it from May sixth of twenty twenty-four?
It must've been another barn, it's supposed to be somewhere else, I don't know.
Okay, well, yeah.
Well, I have a copy and it didn't make sense.
I think unfortunately, we need to send it back out to bid, sorry for the work everybody put into it, but.
We can just make it due July fourteenth, I guess.
Is that all right? I mean, sorry, I know that sucks. Man, would, would you feel comfortable just asking this to change it? I don't.
No.
No, no, we can't do that.
Then you can ask everybody else to change something, too. You know.
What's everybody else saying?
Oh, you're right.
You only have two compliant bids right now, based on the paper.
Right, and then there's no.
You don't like those two.
So. And it happens all the time, if something happens, and I was part of a bid a couple, a couple of weeks ago, and it, the budget wasn't right, and they got to outbid again, so, is what it is.
We can do, we can do it again, and.
Okay. Maybe we'll just send it out, resend it, Sherry.
Yeah, I'll call them and just tell them we got it, but there's, you know, we got a different data on this, and.
Who wrote the bid? Who wrote, who wrote the bid?
Um, I think it was done, we used the same one. We used the same one that we did from last year when we put it out. It got passed around, everybody was okay with it, we just changed the dates and that stuff's missed.
Right.
And now it just, it looks like we're okay with what we wanna do, we're just gonna change the date and make it due for your July fourteen meeting.
Yeah, okay. I'll call them and tell them that, it's gonna go out to bid again. Read the, read the paperwork.
Read the RFP.
Read it this time.
Read it, we finna read it, yeah.
Read the whole thing, so.
Proof it.
I don't know, proof it, whatever.
Thanks for catching that, Naomi.
All righty.
All right.
So I, um, I gave you guys personnel policy, and I, I don't, um, I didn't wanna print the whole thing for all of you, in, in your, in front of you, Benji, you have the whole thing from, uh, prior.
Yeah.
But the only thing we're looking at in the whole thing is to, it's yellow, and you should have just a yellow page.
So the highway is for, right?
Yeah.
Oh, maybe I saw that.
Yeah, it's just start it, place a quarter page, yeah.
A few seconds ago.
Yeah. So it's part of this whole thing, but you're gonna get a clean copy when I stop, when you change it. So what we added for on page twelve, um, and the, the board agreed that, um, it had to do with the highway department personnel who take approved leave during the winter season, will have their leave hours counted as hours worked for the purpose of calculating overtime. And this whole paragraph came from Jason, and the prior board was okay with it. And all I was tasked to do was to add that to it in the overtime section, and then it's a little, um, I fit in what I could as best as I felt, is if you remember, we had the Board of Fire Awards up until about a year ago. So the Board of Fire Awards had their own policies as far as, you'll see it says rescue employees, because they have different work schedules, so I tried to figure out the best way of putting it in kind of the appropriate spot, but highlighting it at the same time. Like, if you look on page thirteen, it talks about fire rescue, and it talks about recognized holidays. So I stuck it under the holidays part, but it says fire rescue employees, it's not for everybody, because they're calculated different. So I did put that was one of their policies, I stuck in there. Then if you move on to the page fifteen, again, they talked about the fire chief shall arrange vacation leave, so the vacation does not interfere with the work schedule. I added that to G, the vacation leave, so vacation leave talks about everybody, and then we added fire department vacation leave because of the shifts that they're doing, they're doing twenty-four, you know, they work twenty-four hours, so, um, three twenty-fours are forty-two, so they work forty-two in a week versus, so I stuck it in there, but all I did was take their policy, and I didn't change their policy, but with the Board of Fire Ward, is, is they inserted it into the town personnel policy. I did the same thing with substitutions, uh, when they trade, I didn't know where to put that one, so I stuck it in that for personal time, because evidently they can trade shifts. So, and then, um, the other, like I said, under bonus leave, again, um, I stuck in their policy in the appropriate place. Now, I was asked to ask Chief Worrick if he would look at what was highlighted, and if he had any concerns, or did I miss anything? And he sent me back an email stating that he was fine with what I had. So if you're fine with it, we can make an adopted or amended date, and then you'll get a fresh one without the yellow highlights. You'll get a, off the bottom, a fresh one that you'll have to sign, because we'll amend it on a certain date.
So I guess.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I guess that's for, touch of history for the two new board members, maybe, or probably three, you know, we talked about this since you've been on, Bruce, we, we've been gonna keep the fire department's stuff incorporated since the disband of fire, fire wards, and that's what we're doing. The thing about highway, uh, is something, I always try to get the board to do very much favor of it, how it works now, um, if you take a day off, it does not count as your, your, uh, work time. So in the winter, it's a big problem, because if somebody wants a day off during a nice week, um, even if just stay home and do chores, and then you get a surprise snowstorm, you would get, say, paid forty-eight hours straight time, and then your overtime kicks in. So what it does is really discourages people from taking time off, a day off, or they can't take vacation and go away, but long winters, they need a day off, and really discourages it, because they don't wanna screw up to eight or ten hours of overtime, time and a half. So, and I saw this as a big problem, um, you know, I've worked there over twenty years, and saw it as a big problem, because you need to get time away from it, so, um, where I work now, it, it's counted as, as work time, and if you take a day off and it snows, then, is what it is, you get paid your time and a half, and I, I think it's, it really strongly suggests that we, um, change that in our policy for that. I know most of you guys probably know that, that's how that works, but for yourself and anybody else might be watching TV, that's, uh.
How's it work with sick time?
Any time off.
Any time off, all right.
Well, I should read it, that's how ours is at work. Highway department personnel who take approved leave during the winter will have their leave hours count as hours worked.
So sick time would be classified as approved leave?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Rick, Naomi, I'm not missing.
That's what I believe it was, and it, it was exclusively, it says there, the policy was exclusively to, to reduce burnout. Um, leave may not be used as a substitute for absence during winter operations. Leave shall be defined as earned for this section.
So, yeah, so if you get.
So if you end up being.
You don't feel very good, and you know the storm's coming, and the boss, you know, and that was another thing, you, you, I, I, I strongly suggest to my crew, when, uh, they're not feeling good, we got a long storm coming, stay home and rest up. Well, you don't want to if they know that they're gonna then come in, not, still not feeling good, and work for straight time. So, then they come in feeling like crap, they don't produce as good, makes the rest of the crew sick, so, I just, I, to me, it's, uh, something I always didn't like here, so, I think it's a good fix that we can do for the.
You're looking for a motion?
Uh, if you all know, if there's, nobody else has any other things to say?
All right, that's.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. I wanted to explain it, and then the fire department stuff is just, was their personnel already said.
I do have a question on this, and I, I don't know if it's just a typo.
Where's that?
On the top of page fourteen. It says non-shirt work.
Non-officer.
Shift.
Oh.
Non-shift work.
Okay. I, I thought it was shift, but.
Well, I looked up non-shirt.
I didn't know what kind of town we had here.
You know what it said?
Non-shift work.
People like fire department are not in their turnout gear, their special gear, they may be working some administrative. So it's a, it's a valid term.
It says shift, it says shift work employees, and then the next bullet said non-shift work.
All right.
Okay.
Good catch.
I just, I'll have to be right, so I guess if we adopt it, then that'll be fixed in the final.
As amended.
As amended. Okay.
All righty, well, there's, there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
All favor of accepting the yellow markups. What's it called, the, what's the official call of this thing?
Personnel. Updates the personnel for motion.
Okay.
With, with the amendment, right?
As amended, yellow. And.
Shirt to shift.
Shirt to shift. I'll, I'll second adoption.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dave. Good catch, Ben.
Yep.
So what you also see is the evaluation form that we went over. We got several of them gathered. Benji shared his, and from what I had made for notes was, we took the back page, which you're looking at now as page eight, was the New Boston Performance Evaluation, that's kind of the overall summary, professional development, you have that conversation, employee comments, and then your evaluator signs it, and so does your employee. The other thing they wanted, you had wanted me to do, but it was not working, Benji, was, so I took your first page as well because they liked the type of evaluation, and it wasn't room enough without totally viewing everything on the other part. So I added the New Boston first page and the Boston last page. You'll see that I gave one to five, which then matches the interior.
Yep.
One to five, I left your definitions, but instead of zero to four, I did one to five to match the content.
Yep.
So New Boston, we took the first page, because they liked the type of evaluation, whether it was probation, promotion, special warning, separation. And so I, I felt it important enough to use that. And then this is all PDF fillable, and then this other one, and I'll send it to you, and you can play around with it. When you click on one through five, in all these different categories, it gives you a back calculation, and it does work. It's all set up in the PDF to give you an evaluate, like, so job knowledge, you're gonna see, whatever you clicked on is gonna carry over here as four. And then it does give you an average once you've done all the categories. And then to the right of that, you can use it however you want to use it, it really, I thought it was just a cool idea. And then it still gives you the opportunity for strengths needing improvement. And then we added the New Boston page to have a little bit more of a summary for overall.
What about ethics and? Where were they going, ethics and honesty?
So there is.
Is it buried somewheres, and it's one of those?
There is. Job knowledge, quantity of work, quality of work, initiative, attitude, public contact, operation and care of non-equipped and property, attendance, safety, communication, leadership, flexibility, policies and procedures, planning and organizing, decision-making, productivity, and employee evaluation and development. So I don't, I guess, have a ethics one.
Ethics and honest behavior. I mean, we didn't have one either, but we finally put one in. And for our non-exempt, this covered non-exempt and exempt people?
Well, I guess what we thought, and Benji can correct me wrong, it's only just you and I, is this is for the, I guess I'll call them the hourly employees.
Okay.
Your stat, your department heads, you guys, the selectmen have adopted a different one for the department heads.
Okay, I didn't know what it was for.
Yeah, so this is, the idea of doing this is we need to share it with everybody, so that by October, November, they know what they're being judged on.
Yeah.
And there, but there's a two, there is a different level.
I didn't know.
The selectmen have a different one for the department heads. This is for Jason, Mark, and it, it doesn't include the fire, they're done by the collective area.
Please.
I'm sorry, police, not fire. So the fire, DPW, and myself would use the fire employees, but then the department heads, they, done by you guys, done with a different form.
Maybe we can come up with one, I mean, I'm not looking to add more, but ethic and honest behavior. Ethical behavior, honesty, whatever, it could be combined, and I don't know if that could be stuck in someplace that you could see it, but.
Just add a.
Maybe hit it under policy and procedures, if you're supposed to be working ethically.
It says, public contact has considered the willingness to work with the public and project a good image of town employees.
If somebody, if somebody working for you is not honest or ethical in his behavior, what do you ding him for in there?
You should, yeah.
That's my only comment.
Yep. Well, we have, not to make it, I mean, there's a little bit more room at the bottom if you want to come up with a box.
If you want to add one, fine, if you don't, we felt it was important enough at our, at our work.
Yeah.
All employees to have that. Even the president.
And I guess, I guess the only thing, I don't remember how we left it, so if, if I'm dragging up an argument that's been settled, remind me, Naomi, the only, the question I had, we, we all kind of agreed that, for the most part, we like the layout of it. Everybody have their spin on it, but was the numbering system, there seemed to have been some disagreement. If, if raises are gonna be given according to the performance evaluation, or not? Because if they are, then the numbers need to mean something, otherwise what's the point?
Well, let me just say, you had a thousand people, and you had a grading system. It'd be easy to apply the numbers on a matrix, a five, that there's penetration, the labor rates, you know, first quartile, third, fourth quartile, for the pay where they are in the pay scale, and the, the five, four, three, two, one, it's a twenty matrix. You say they get that percent, you know, but you don't have that numbers here. I mean, you don't really have the huge numbers here at the town to do that.
Well, no, but.
Because you're taking away from somebody who's doing a very good job, but he's not doing a fantastic job, it isn't like you get an extra part of money.
Well, no, that, that's my point, is the numbers need to follow that, and then what, did we decide on that? So, so that, that was the thing, if the board was gonna, and I think that, and we, we can't kick it down the road too much further because I think it was agreed that.
We need to get this in operation.
Well, yeah, because it, it, it's only fair to the employees. But if we're gonna say your raise is gonna be according to this, then how that works is you take those numbers, you find the medium, and you get a three point eight.
I get all that.
So that kind of goes with the decision, we, we, we talked that around, and no one knows we ever came to it. Are we gonna say it comes to this, are we just gonna say that we're gonna recommend a, a flat raise to everybody? And these are just to let them know how they perform, and that's it?
We're trying to get away from it was a flat raise for everybody, some people might get a little more, some people get a little less.
Right, but we can't, exactly.
Right.
But if the numbers go too high, and we're gonna recommend up to four percent for all employees, and we can't have the possibility of getting a five. You know, which I don't think any, you know, everybody's gonna land, well, nobody's perfect, and I don't think we have anybody that's a one either.
I understand the problem.
And, and that's, that, when I first started, that's how they did it, and I'm not saying that's better than how we do it now. I'm just saying that those are the two ways of doing it, and I think if we're, the board's gonna pick raises, we need to decide what way we want to go. And I don't know if we ever did that, I guess.
Well, if you've got somebody that's underperforming, you need to decide whether you want them to even work for you, never mind get a raise.
Sure, yeah.
So the number does mean something. The number is, is a product of their work for the past evaluation period, whether it's six months or a year, whatever that is. It's, it's a condition to, to do this as to whether or not they even work.
Yeah.
Continue employment, look, you're constantly a one.
Right.
We gotta kick ya.
So.
You know, you.
Yeah.
And if you perform satisfactory, if you're getting a satisfactory performance review, the raise should follow automatic because, you know, that's what the number means.
So when your personnel policy says that you're supposed to have evaluations done by November first, so that you can hash out, what does three point eight mean, what does four point two mean, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm thinking, this is where I was at, and just get these all done, and you guys look at them and see where.
And we'll have that for budget season.
Two point six to four point five, you know what I'm saying?
But another problem is, you have a huge range of employees' salaries, which a percent, highly compensated person, four percent, is a hell of a lot more than the very lowest. So if you had, if you had hundreds of people, you could do this. It's very difficult doing it with a small group. I'm just saying, because, because of the, if everybody got paid the same, you know, like a number, five bucks an hour. But you got people making three times that, maybe, that's the pattern of this pool that's getting the raise. So that's what I see the difficulty is, because if you want to give somebody the highest compensated person an extra half a percent of their raise, you're gonna have to tap ten little people on the lower end of the scale.
Well, I think that was the idea, I think that was the idea of doing it in November, so then when we put our budget together, we can say this is the idea for the increases.
Oh, I'm, I'm okay with that, but it usually seems like.
The personnel policy says that we're supposed to have them done by November first. And then that basically gets you started with your, you know, then you would have a form, you wouldn't even have thirty-five of these, but I could take the employee and tell you what they came out as.
And just as somebody that got, got, I did years ago, and then just recently, that, that's how we did them this year at my work, is the things that you get the lower percentage on, you're gonna work harder because that means more money in your pocket. So if this means nothing compared to the money that you get in a bank, who the hell cares? Unless you're all ones and it's sort of your job on the line, then that's different, but, but.
I've never done this before, but how does a pool of money get established?
By vote.
By who?
The townspeople.
Well, that's the problem.
It is.
So we have a, what do you call it, default budget again?
Yeah, well, it not even, that doesn't even matter, it goes, it's a separate, then a separate.
So typically, what they do is, the raises are separate, well, the board decides, are we gonna do a pool of X amount of percent? Then Beth takes everybody that's in the pool, takes their rate, takes what that X amount would be, and then you have a pot of money with everybody's list in there.
Okay, so.
And when it's straight across the board, that's what you got when they did it at.
If it passes a town meeting, you get that pool to apply.
You get that pool money.
So that's separate than the default budget on the operating.
Yes.
Just make sure.
Which makes this tough, because you can still do all this and still get voted no for the money, and it was all for nothing anyway, but that's out of our hands. I, I've always been in favor of having it in the budget, it should, it should be, but the last umpteen years, it's went for a flat. They called it cost of living or whatever, three percent, two percent. That's how it's been done, for every, so every employee, no matter the performance, has been getting the same raise. And, and then, because we got away from that, got no raises for six years, and then got a raise, didn't get a raise, got a raise, didn't get a raise. And then it was, we kind of even got away from these because they mean nothing.
Didn't mean anything, right?
And even as department head, you know, I'm like, you're gonna have me do seventeen of these, and they don't mean nothing? I refuse to do them all, you know, they don't mean nothing, you know, the guys work hard to make better from what I told them they need to do better on, and then don't mean nothing, so. But the way this town has established their, their way to give raises, it, I don't have a fix to make it better because it's still, you can do all this, and it still goes to town vote, and they could say you're not getting raises.
Just my question here is, this is only gonna matter if the line item in the warrant outlook is voted positive for the raises.
Yes.
It doesn't matter if you go six years with no raises. Is that correct? It only applies for the years that we have money, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I don't, I don't know.
Well, it's also a record of an employee's performance.
That's true, too.
It's not just a raise.
No.
It's a record of how they've performed through the year.
I didn't use the word, I meant to say, the only time this is effective is when we get money in the warrant.
For, for a pay increase, but like Ben said, to, to, if you got someone that you're trying to maybe get rid of and having a hard time, it's kind of a paper trail that you're not performing to, but it's, it's a tough thing, I, I don't know.
So if you just sign on a form.
Yep.
My thought, and you do, everybody, the department heads get them all done by November first.
Yep.
And you guys, I can put together, this is what it is, and this is what everybody got by name. Because that's your information, it's not necessarily for the public. You, you could discuss that, because someone's evaluation is not necessarily public information.
Sure, no.
But as far as you guys then being able to create some sort of matrix from that, I don't know. But at least if we get them done.
Yep.
And then you guys get the number by November first, then you can work with those numbers to come up with in the next eight weeks, the budget to, how you're gonna do it.
And I, I'm in favor of moving forward with this tonight, not hanging up any, I just, to, to speak back to you guys that probably wasn't here at the table when I made my argument, the one through five, my concern was if we do go with the number system and an average at the end, like, like was talked about at one time. The five is hard to, zero to four comes out to just a little over three for most people, or two and a half to three. The one to five is gonna, we, we have a hard time ever getting over three percent, Mark, if you're not getting. So it's, if we're gonna do it that way, that would make it kind of hard, and, and it makes it very, if you did do it that way, in my opinion, it makes it fair, because even if you're, you like one guy a little bit better than the rest, when you go down every single category, all these categories, and someone honest the number is what it is, and you're just giving a bag of money and said, give each employee what you think for a percentage, eh, I don't know. At the very least, I think where we are tonight, Naomi's asking us, we need to come up with a form, and we've, we've kicked it around a lot. This is as, as good as any that we've come up with, because employees deserve to see what they're being graded.
I've had plenty of experience with performance evaluations, receiving and giving, and this one is right on par with any of the good ones, so. I, I like the form, I like the, the format of the numbers, and we can decide what those numbers mean and how, how we deal with them later. But as far as approving a form, I, I move we accept this.
Yeah, I'll act like you want to say something else.
No, I'm okay with that.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I moved.
Do I have a second?
I was only gonna second.
All right, well, do we have any more discussion on it? If not, all in favor of accepting the town where employee personnel evaluation is provided?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Naomi.
Can you set the read agenda? Benji, while you're doing that, can I, so I have a couple things that don't require motions. We have a junkyard license that's a renewal for Allied Auto, requires all of you sign. I have two cemetery deeds, a gentleman purchased two cemetery deeds, so there's two things for you guys to sign. And it doesn't require a motion, but I meant to throw in the box. And then there's a folder here that I'm gonna snag Ben's and Jack's out of. These are people that have taken oaths of office for previously appointed people, and so Pam has sworn them in, and then you guys have to sign the bottom. So I'm gonna hand it all around in one envelope and see if you can make it work.
I heard you.
While you read, because you're gonna be the manifestor.
Yes. So the consent agenda, abatement number four eleven dash one eighty-six dash W four nine, number four oh three dash one one nine, a gravel tax, four oh five slash sixty, operation number twenty-four dash four seventy-one dash zero two E. Abatement assessment recommendation, number one, four oh four dash fifty-nine dash four, charitable, was it charitable?
Yes.
Number two, four twelve dash one nine three dash one three, denied. Number three, four eleven dash one eight six dash E seven two. Are you good?
Good.
All right.
Do you want me to go, or do you want to bounce the?
Want me to read the manifest real quick while they're still passing them around?
Yeah. Yes.
So I move that we order the treasurer to sign payroll and accounts payable checks dated June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, as included in the following manifest. Payroll manifest, one hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, which is weekly, monthly, and quarterly payroll. Accounts payable manifest, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-three cents. John Stark accounts payable manifest, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, fifty-one dollars. Ware School accounts payable manifest, eight hundred and fifty thousand, sixty-one dollars. And appropriations to capital reserve funds, six hundred and sixty thousand, for a total of two million, five hundred and thirteen thousand and twenty dollars and twenty cents. Following manifests were previously, previously ordered to sign at June ninth, twenty twenty-four Board of Select meeting. Payroll manifest, eighty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents, check date six nineteen twenty-five. Accounts payable manifest, one hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents, check dated six nineteen twenty twenty-five. As there are no selectmen meetings scheduled for June thirtieth and July seventh, twenty twenty-five, please vote to order the treasurer to sign payroll checks dated July third and July tenth, twenty twenty-five, an estimated amount to be one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Furthermore, to order the treasurer to sign up to the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars for accounts payable that cannot wait until the next scheduled meeting. Reports and actual check amounts will be reported to the Board of Selectmen by inclusion on the manifest memo at the next scheduled meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Shoot, I need to drink a water after that one. Anyone bounce back up minister's report?
Yeah. Bruce, you can listen and even multitask, I bet. What I hand you guys each week is a two-sided kind of what's on our radar. On the first top, the top of it is usually typically what we address at the meeting, and then if I can give you some foresight into what I have scheduled, at least that I know of today, I know we're three weeks away from the next meeting, but. For instance, the parks and right by laws, we did it, we opened the bids, we're gonna put those back out, we adopted the employee form and the personnel cable. I'm still waiting, I'll get you two guys the new, you're looking at a, I think it's called multimedia versus the cable TV. They're gonna look at some bylaws changes. So that's coming up. And then other items that have still been sitting out there is the handyman we talked about. And then public hearings for, Jason has spent a lot of time on snow and ice and solid waste, so we need to really think about putting those on a future agenda. And then we have to have a plan for the building upkeep and maintenance project on all buildings, we talked about before the fall. I'll send you every month, you'll get a building permit report from the building department, you guys will get that. The, we haven't done anything more with the AOT permit, which is the alteration of terrain on the East Road property, and the fire department integration into the personnel policy, I think I can already tell that. Sewal Hoyt, I do know that's been kind of quiet, we have Steve kind of keeping an eye on that. Mildred Hall, I just have to find out and do the backup to figure out who was adopted and when they were adopted in that park, and I haven't had a chance to do that. This was thrown on the air, impact discussion for future agenda, not sure. The PBN is the permit by notification for the transfer station, Jason had sent that over to DES, and I guess the next time Jason comes in, we'll have to see if he can get an update to it, if he did get over to the state. The fire chief gave you a quick up and update on the EOP and the HMP. There was another item on here to review the building permit process after the new code enforcement was hired, which he has. It was gather a request to gather the lease agreements, consent agenda, we already taken care of. There is some perambulations that will have to be done at some point, and if any of you know what perambulation is, is you go with the abutting town and you go out and you actually meet and document the corner, the corners of each where you abut each other. There is nobody for the sext imposition, Jason and I, as we have areas, we go out and, for the barriers sides, we also, I sell cemetery lots, I'm, I'm using one. The rest of it, I guess you guys can continue to read down through here.
Impact fee discussion.
Yeah, that was put on there many months.
That should be a planning board discussion, right? Not, not.
Well, I think it was recommend to the planning board, and I don't know if they'll go any further, I guess, but.
I think it starts there, because it does, you have to work together on it, because it does, the impact fee is based on your infrastructure costs. But I think it needs to be tied in with planning board.
Well, of course, but I think it was, it started out as a discussion to recommend or discuss with planning.
Yeah, and I think that's part of the questionnaire, I think, too, with those.
Oh, could be.
For the.
I honestly haven't filled mine out yet.
Because I think it's certainly worth, you know, discussion, and I think that's all it was about, was maybe put it on planning's radar so we could talk together.
And I think this, like I said, action items to be addressed, there was no, it was just, we didn't want to lose track of things.
I think that's what it was about, Bruce, just there was, there was some feeling that, you know, and there has been, and there's been a lot of subdivision stuff, there has been a lot of impact cost to the town.
And, and the other ones.
Should be considered in the future.
Yeah, and then you flip it over, the awareness, and then you're gonna have Jason come in here periodically and then River and Bridge, and give you an update. But the awareness items are just things that I'm working on, or things that are very old. For instance, I'll just give you the, the one con cemetery, there's an awful lot of liquid to take that over. We've been asked to take that over, but you have to actually go out and notify all the heirs, and I believe that just takes a long time, and that's just, as I said, open item, take over, but whenever I had nothing to do, that was an open item. I do have one, just one thing I'm gonna just hand around to you guys, is, there's a request currently in front of, it's been in front of planning board, and then it's now coming to the zoning board for a wetlands, the buffer impact to put in the road. And there was an old subdivision off of Eastman and Barnard Hill.
Yeah.
That a new, a new buyer now wants to, instead of making ten, he wants to make ten into three lots. So there's going to be a request at some point for a request for release of easements. Now, this, nothing you have to do tonight, but I'll take one upstairs for James, for, if you're bored at night, that's.
That was the one they were supposed to send all the way through, so I'm gonna turn around down there and never do it.
Yeah, so the intent is to bring, at this point, tentatively, is one off Barnard Hill, would be a driveway, stand the roadway, and then two off the end of Eastman, but that's, that'll come to you at some point, but just hang on to that, and just, you can peruse through that and make yourself aware of things, that's all. All right. That's it.
All right. Well, next on the agenda is minutes, but since I would assume the two new members would probably abstain from them, I'd, me and Bruce don't make the forum for it, right? I guess, I hate to, but yeah.
You want to talk about what you mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, I wish James was here, because I, um.
Okay, sorry.
But. I think we talked about the minutes, I, it, yes, I want to talk about them. I think it should be all the three of us were here that, everybody heard them, but the three that can vote on them. So, next on the agenda is selectmen committee updates. I know Bruce has one, do.
Yeah, and the.
We, we mentioned the cemetery, what ended up happening with the, with the mole in the cemetery, we, we sent back out and was gonna give a.
I don't know, I don't have the answer.
That's fine, okay, good, all right, go ahead, Bruce.
You guys got emails from Naomi and David Erickson about the.
The what?
Energy studies on the town hall and the library and the software fire station, actually town offices.
The library one wasn't attached, I'm sorry, I did send it to you, but there was nothing attached.
I only read the software one.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure why those got sent here, the energy commission needs to like, go over those first and hook with it. A presentation to the select board to decide what to do. And they had, I mean, you, you mentioned at the meeting the other night, but we didn't have anything to even look at then, so it.
Will you bring them in the next time?
Yeah, I'll try and do that, well, it won't be the next time, it'll be after their next meeting, which won't be before the fourteenth.
So. That was it, that's it. Well, correspondence, another business. I think this is where we could.
Hey, Benji.
Uh, James wanted me to talk about.
At the committee.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, ma'am.
Sorry about that. Seems like whenever he's unavailable to be here, I'm gonna kind of be our rep.
Reps you for the March vote.
Huh?
Reps you for March, run for select board.
It's all good, it's all good. All right, so we actually had kind of a lot going on this month with Park. We are pursuing the lawn care issue with ASAP. We're gonna schedule a walkthrough again with myself, Kristen and Dave, and Tracy hopefully from ASAP, so we can go over some of the things that may not be matching up, misunderstanding, whatever, we spoke about that before. We spoke to Miller Amusement with concerns about the generator trailer placement, there had been some damage in years before with them parking in the corner of that field, we wanted to make sure that wasn't gonna happen again, especially with them being so wet. We are considering asking them to be putting the generator trailer on asphalt for next year, just to try and completely avoid damage for the fields. I'm happy to say, as of Sunday afternoon, the wood chips at Bolton Playground, five of them placed down, we have been dealing with a major issue with water and just how wet it is back there, but Ron Gilman, one of the members of Park, got together with another individual and got everything spread out so far, some raking to kind of clean it up, but the majority is done. With that done, that allows us to move forward with finishing removing the old sandbox, getting a sunshade up over that area, we're gonna smooth it out, put a sunshade up finally, since we can get in there. And then we can start the process of putting the new sandbox, which is ADA compliant, in the corner under the other sunshade. Hopefully, we'll be able to start that soon. At our last meeting, we also have a representative from Junior Generals in to discuss when they're having their storage container put in. They are currently using the building down there by the football field to store all their stuff, that kind of impacts them selling food during the season, so they're bringing a container down, we've gone down, talked about it, discussed all the stuff. We're going to establish some paperwork to say, this is what we expect as far as storage being clean, painted, graffiti, keeping the area around it neat, stuff like that. The other thing they discussed was having a company come through at the beginning of the season to clear all of the brush down at Bolton Field on either sides of the road, and cut back everything near the football field, like really clean it up. They have a company who has donated that time in the past, and they're going to do that, again, they've made that offer again. It's something I like to do, is just kind of keep Bolton as nice and presentable as possible. The last thing we talked about was having the goalposts replaced. That is also something that Junior Generals is looking to fund themselves and donate it as a gift to the town. The current goalposts are in really rough shape, one of them is kind of being supported with extra work. They are looking into having those installed by the twenty twenty-six season, and it would be one hundred percent funds from them. We also have the understanding that we believe the cap is five K without having to have a public hearing, so they all understand that, and if that's what the quote comes into, we will put it in front of the Board of Select and the town to make sure that everything is on the up and up. We spoke to DPW, we're having our carry-in, carry-out trash signs installed by them, two at Bolton, one at Purinton, one at Inison. So far, not having dumpsters at those fields has worked out pretty good. We are saving a good chunk of money out of our budget by doing that, and we have not been finding too much of an issue with trash in the field so far. Last thing we're looking at is, we're considering, scratch that, we are researching signage to talk about other park regulations, such as no dogs on the fields, no golfing on the fields, stuff like that. This stuff is already on the website, but we're considering putting it actually at the fields, as we do have complaints about dogs on the field and stuff like that. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you for all the work, and everybody who's donated everything.
Yeah, absolutely, it's, Ron and his buddy put in a lot of work Saturday and Sunday, they pretty much lived down there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was awesome, so we appreciate that, yes, very much. Thank you, folks.
Next is correspondence, I don't know if we have, I think that would fall under the public comment letter, but do we have anything before that that we should bring up? I've had an email, but I don't get, I get service, I know, nothing that sticks out. Does anybody else have anything?
No, I didn't get emails, right?
Uh, I did, yeah, um. So Conservation was interested in, through another party, now I'm gonna be able to open it. Purchase the material to put in a pond leveler, duck pond.
Put in a what?
Pond, to keep the, to keep the pond a certain level, because right now, there used to always be one out there, the state took care of it for years, and then all it was, a contraption out there, water get too high, run into it, and then out a long pipe and down ditch line. Well, the wave was finally plugged it, and the pond, blue duck pond rode out, so we just dug it all out. And now the only way to control it is to go to the backhoe and yard a wall out, and then it washes everything out, but the previous board had instructed me, when I was Board Director, to ask the state to stop taking care of it, because it resonated a complaint, and due to, you know, not agreeing, I got overruled, so that's what I did, so the states washed their hands from it. Now it's been a works problem for six, seven years, and the, the Conservation was interested in doing this, so I reached out to Jason myself, just to say, hey, I mean, is it something, because he was also had a plan in place of doing a similar thing. He said, are you, are you on board with this? He says, I would be under, you know, the condition that I'm done with it. Not that they're gonna say I'm taking care of it, and then all of a sudden, it's Sunday, and all the people that are supposed to take care of it don't take care of it, now they call highway.
Is this a manufactured item, or you gotta build it on site?
Oh, I think it's pieces. The cost of it is approximately three grand, and like I said, they have a, they have a organization that's willing to pay for it, so it wouldn't be town monies or anything.
But isn't the Beaver, the, talking duck pond, isn't the Beaver the biggest problem?
Yeah, and they were gonna, they were going to fund some trapping of the Beaver also. But the problem is, there's no way to regulate the height of the dam, so even if the, or the pond, rather, so. Then the other question I brought up and, and talked to Jay about was that we'd want to agree on the height of the pond before they just threw it in here, because if it gets too high, it runs out Long Duck Pond Road by the post off, well, starting at the post office down by the bank around the corner, it's supposed to come out near one fourteen and down. So that's where I'd left it, and said that we might want to have a joint conversation with them. I did, do think I got an email today, but I was a never, never land from, from Stephen A. J. for Conservation, but I was a never, never land and get to read it.
The problem I got with that is, we can't let our DPW wash their hands of it, because if something goes awry on the weekend, I think floods over, washes up Duck Pond Road, who's liable for that? We're gonna have to fix it.
Yeah. There should never should have been DPWs anyway.
I know, but unfortunately, we can't wa, we can't let DPW wash their hands of it, because we're responsible for the road. Was the state DOT or DES?
DOT.
DOT. Is it in there right away?
If it crosses the road, it is. If it crosses.
No, no, where that, where that device is.
It's very close. I don't know if it is or isn't.
I think we need, I think we need to determine if it's in the state right away, and if it is.
It's owned by two parties. The pond's owned by the town and Duck Pond Estates.
Okay.
The line goes right up the middle of it. So the water area is owned by us and Duck Pond Estates subdivision. So, um.
I mean, I don't think they'll wanna sign the release of liability and take on all the liability of that thing if this is.
I doubt it, but that would be the, that would be the conditions that, that, that I would think, you know, if we're gonna have one person saying they're gonna take care of it until they don't wanna take care of it.
Right, exactly.
Other, otherwise we might as well let DPW put it in. They wanted to have say, because they're concerned about the aquatic life, and which is, I, I understand, but, um, and it would be no cost to the town then, which is, is great, but I would think we'd wanna agree on the pond height before we just turn it over to somebody else, so that doesn't come out Duck Pond Road. So, I supposed to bring that up and see, you know, they wanna get moving on it, of course, and I don't know as we can make a motion, and I, I was I'm supportive enough of it, 'cause I talked to Jason, he don't, as, as long as he's done with it, he doesn't care.
Yeah, but he can't be done with it.
Well, I think he could be, 'cause it shouldn't be his problem to start with.
Yeah, but it's not.
If floods the road, it becomes his problem.
Yeah, exactly, well, of course, but.
The maintenance of unplugging it daily shouldn't be. And it was a motion of this board that created that.
What's that? The problem?
Of giving the maintenance to the DPW. This board made that motion to take it away from DOT and give it to the town. Now DOT's like, you, you wanted us to take care of it, now you don't wanna take it? We're done, don't call again, so. And I'm not, I don't think the actual dam is in there right away. We could certainly find that out.
I think it's important to find out if it's.
And when it floods, it floods the entrance of Duck Pond Road, as everybody knows, and that's Town Road, of course.
I get that, but if you build a dam in one town and it floods the town up.
Yeah.
Whose fault is that? It's, it's whoever's responsible for the dam.
Do we have to worry about permitting to get this done even by the town? Is that a problem?
No, because I did meet DS, DES out there when I was, um, Director, because I got, got them called on me. And, uh, and doing what they're doing is not illegal. Going over the backhoe, and as long as they're pulling beaver material out, not digging anything else.
But I mean, putting this new device in there.
Yep, that's fine.
Will that have to get a permit?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I could talk more to Jason.
But as long as on the town property, we're okay, but if it's on the, I don't know what the line is, if it's on the estate's property, I don't know what the line is.
Well, the, I had OnX and looked it up. It cuts it right in half, really.
Of course it does.
So I, I was requested to bring it up and see what the rest of the board felt about it, and if I would support it, and I, I would if they would, um.
We need to have a firm agreement of some kind. You can't just wing it.
Right.
On something like that.
Right.
There has to be some sort of a contract.
And I thought maybe, I thought maybe if we met with, uh, Conservation, you know, probably Steve and, uh, Jason, then trying to find it, excuse me, trying to. I, I thought that might be the way to, to go about it. See what the rest of you guys thought, I guess, while you're, while I'm looking this up.
And you, and they don't wanna wait to have a meeting?
Well, um, we gotta, we gotta.
It's the only way it's gonna happen, I think.
Why the hell can't we find it?
I'm not gonna give. Somebody can't wash it over there and didn't knock down, wash their hands of it around two minutes after it's installed.
Yeah.
There you go. That little.
This is what's gonna happen.
Might not be two minutes, but it's gonna be some time. So tech, you know, I know exactly where the that's the state right away.
So what's this here?
So this would be, this is the Town Aware, and this is Duck Pond Estates, or whatever.
So in other words.
Whatever they call themselves.
So in other words, we back down for the exodus?
So. So the problem's right here-ish.
That looks like if it isn't the state, it's, um.
What's the other?
The state's.
NDAC board.
We may be calling the state again, Benji. Begging them to come back.
I mean, do you want, do you wanna, I'd suggest a joint meeting with them and Jason and listen to it. Is that what we should do?
I think we ought to involve them.
Wouldn't be bad for an educated.
Well, no, I, I kinda suggested that when I spoke to him on, I spoke to him on the phone, 'cause he had chemo, and I suggested that, but, uh, you know, I know it's, of course, they wanna be going right away, but, uh, nothing to do about that.
Were they open to it, Benji?
Yeah, I think so.
I think, I think it's worth pursuing.
Let's invite them.
Of course, they're worried about, you know, the aquatic life, and they're hatching right now, 'cause of the turtles, and the pond level's too low, but.
Well, by that picture, there's no water in it.
Yeah, that's why I don't think they'll find it.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, it's not very deep. I mean, people used to worry, were kids ice skating on it? Something about two and a half feet.
Yeah, I know. I drained it once, they had a complaint.
Chuck put his truck through it, it wasn't that deep either.
So, would, would that be something we'd wanna invite the two of them, Conservation and Jason?
Good idea.
That's what I had for correspondence. Anybody else have other correspondence before we?
There was a email for Mary Ann.
Yes. There was another one. It had to do, had to do with giving, oh, you go ahead. It had to do with giving Naomi permission to seek legal advice on a gravel bit permit. Really, all you need to do is give her permission.
Yeah, 'cause your legal policy, I need to ask you permission to seek guidance. Um, and I would pull out, you know, kinda when we started, to give everything I can to them to save some money. But I think we need a decision. It's, um.
We certainly can.
If you read RSA 155E, I mean, it's kinda mind-numbing, and there's all kinds of supporting information on the web from state groups that do this stuff. And it's like, one person says X, one person says Y, these are the experts. I think we need to get our person up front before we do anything.
Oh, I don't think there's anybody in town qualified to answer, or that we should stick their neck out to answer this question.
Before we go make a, even approach making a decision, we ought to get the opinion.
Of course, and I don't even know if it's something this board make decision. The, really, all we had to do is give Naomi permission to seek.
Yeah.
Legal opinion on it.
Okay, that's all I need from you. If you guys.
That's it, I agree with that.
Yep.
You need to vote on that, no?
I don't think you need to vote, as long as consensus is to allow me to reach out.
Please send that in, Laura, right?
Yeah, I mean, does anybody wanna discuss this and, and ask her to send it in? So, public comment.
I don't, I don't have any problem with the language. Anybody can make any changes they want. I just took a stab at it. Sort of used a piece of yours, and, so I don't care what the changes totally. I just saw that.
I mean, maybe we could, we could work on, on making one, but.
This is one I passed around before from Remi.
Yeah, he's had one too, so I, I don't care what it is. I think we need to have something that we can legally stand behind. Because we are, like the gentleman says, we are balancing on, uh, freedom of, freedom of expression.
You do, and, and I think we have a right, or, or an obligation to do our best to protect employees, um, try to stop them, um. But if there's somebody that has a problem with one of us, whether we like it or not, that's the only place for them to say it.
Right.
Uh, I didn't put anything about the Select Board in there. We're, uh, we're open game.
Well, you did kinda put something with the Select Board, no? You said if it's outside of, you know, civil discourse, send an email.
Or a letter.
Or a letter. I mean.
But they can scream and holler as loud as they want, you know? I, I'm just suggesting that if enough of this happens, and somebody gets very upset someday, and there are plenty of lawyers that'll take this on a contingency basis, and to get all the backup information they ever want, have a clerk go off and do the search on the YouTube for as many years we've been doing it, and find out who else had been aggrieved. The Town Aware can get sued for, for allowing a forum here to, um, denigrate people openly, so.
If it's not for somebody that's public office, I agree.
I didn't put anybody there.
No, I, I understand, but the, the, the few, couple times that, last week there, unfortunately, not agreed with, with any of it is when you run for public office, it puts yourself out there for that, and I don't, not saying it's right at all, I just don't feel legally.
What are you talking, me?
You, and there was another one, and, and.
Wait a minute, I got, that was public comment.
I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about, you know, what, what was said about you prior. You were running or asking to be for Board of Selectmen, and that would be, be any of us that ran. It's, that's a fine line. I don't know how you, how you stop somebody. And then, not to mention, it was gonna fall out of somebody's mouth till it's already said, and then you're like, oh, well, shouldn't let him say that, but it already fell out. It's gonna be like a radio station, have a 10-second lay on it.
You cannot ring the bell, but you can, you can correct, you can moderate the speech.
Yep.
You did a pretty good job of establishing what reasonable speech was, and two people didn't think you were talking about them.
Correct. I didn't know it was gonna be said or, or not until it was said.
But when it's said, you can stop them.
Yep.
Moderation.
Right. Sometimes it's hard till it's, till, till it's done. I, I think when we have the minute conversation, we adopt them, um, or not adopt them, that'll, that specific will come out, but, uh, specific conversation will come out, but, you know, when something was said at the very end of that speech that I thought probably wasn't true, I did say that was enough, that was the end of the speech.
I understand that.
It, it is a tough thing. It's not that I, I, you know, support that type of public comment or anything else, I just, we gotta when it's, when it's about a employee, it's our duty to say, no, you're not gonna talk about an employee that way.
Agreed.
Right.
Let me show this to Benji. I don't think he's seen this. What is that? It's the Town of Remi has that, is a procedure, policy.
Or someone's getting up here to talk about Naomi or any of the other employees in the whole town, and it was our duty to, to to curb that. When someone's running for public office, I don't know where to draw on it. I'm not saying I like it or condone it, I just don't know. So if they can't speak their opinion about wanting somebody up there, then what do they do, I guess?
I could take care of myself.
I understand.
That ain't a problem.
And I'm not, I'm not really trying to pick on that instance. It just happens to be the latest one.
There's a lot of people who can't.
Right.
Okay, and I think the Town Aware has some obligation on what they allow for speech.
Yep.
Especially telling up front, so you're visiting the correct, and if you never tell them, then why are you picking on me? I think you have some kind of a, whether it's that or versus whoever's in other towns.
We do say when, you know, we, we have changed the policy over the years, that when somebody wants to harp on a specific topic that they have to get on the agenda. That was something that's been changed over the years, 'cause Public Comment used to go, used to have two of them, and they would go an hour. And, uh, I just don't.
I think you also, I mean, I think you need to discuss, or when you do have your discussion, is, you know, if someone can say they're gonna send it and want it in the minutes, we, um, it's been plenty of arguments, and plenty of conversations in prior boards that one was asked to be read into the minutes, was not read into the minutes, not even acknowledged that it even was received. So I think that someone standing up there reading verbatim and then asking to have it attached to the minutes, I don't believe that's I think we have a minute taker that does a good job at creating a synopsis of what was there. But I just, you know, 'cause you're gonna forget somebody. If you're gonna attach this guy's or this one's or this one's, and then you decide to not acknowledge another one and don't attach it.
Well, I, I think.
You're just as much in trouble.
I think that's where tough decision
Yep.
is, is coming up for that, because
Yeah.
we always have accepted.
A public equal balance.
We've always accepted letters entered into the minutes, but if something is completely legally false, then where do you stand on that?
Right.
Which I think is a, like you said, I'd rather for James, 'cause the three of us have to vote on it. We like their opinions, but we can't vote yes on the no in the minutes, but. So I, I mean, we want to send these couple off to legal and just see what they say, or they have suggestions about it. I, I think we should start, you know, do they have some other, uh, town that they've written?
Or offer another town.
Yeah, yeah, another town.
Which is fine.
Yep.
There's no need to reinvent the wheel on this. I mean, if somebody's got a good policy, that's legal. Because you got, there's a fine line, but, I mean,
There is.
unpleasant speech is still protected speech. You know, just 'cause you don't wanna hear it, doesn't mean they don't have the right to say it.
Right.
So, uh, we have to be pretty careful with that, because, um, I certainly don't wanna infringe anybody's rights to speak.
No.
But we also don't have to sit here and be a punching bag.
Right.
None of us.
Other people be punching bags.
Or, or anybody else. There's, there's, there's really no need for that.
No.
So I, I don't know, if we can have this looked at, and then.
I think the specific question I'd like to know is, is what I'm fairly confident we have the legal bounds to say stop if it's protecting one of our employees. If it's a public office, the taxpayers are voting for that position, obviously Select Board, but what, what some others, the, the Town Voters.
And, and any, any elected positions.
What is that? 'Cause I don't know about that.
Ethics, they're elected.
Right, right.
Town clerk, he's elected.
So I think that would open, I think that'd give a little more leeway, I mean.
But volunteers, like planning board, zoning board, they, you have, they're treated like employees, not, not elected positions.
Somebody hates a neighbor, get up here and rant and scream. It's like, it's like cable TV. You know?
So the elected, the elected positions, I don't, I, I think fortunately, need a little more give on it, because that's their option to say why they think they ought to have somebody else.
I agree, there's a distinction, yeah.
We all see the back and forth crap when they vote for presidents and governors. It's awful, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I guess, and if they have a, have a, like, like you just said, a suggested guideline, and that would be fine. You know, and if they have something we could read off at the beginning of every meeting. I don't wanna read a whole page of it.
No.
We can post it on the raw.
We could post it.
Yeah.
That's why I put a simple, you know, two paragraphs, preamble.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, that's all I had for correspondence, and Jack, you two got anything?
I have nothing else.
What the other issue we get from? Well, I'll be outside. Is it a public discussion or a non-public discussion?
Is it a public discussion or a non-public discussion? Oh, yes.
Probably not, probably.
No, you would probably think so.
Can I see what else?
You sent the email.
Oh, that's, it's an on公.
Well, there's been anybody else that's, thank you for confirming that, yeah. All right, we can do that after. Can come up with the letters, I guess. If there's nothing else, I guess we can set the...
I didn't, I didn't really set the agenda, cause we're like three weeks out. And, you know, I think, I guess...
You wanna invite?
Benji and I usually get together, which is what we used to do, but now we're three weeks apart, so there may be things that come up in the next three weeks that I can't tell you today what's gonna be on the agenda, but...
Leave a little opening and chat with you.
There's what?
I said, we leave a little opening and I can chat with you a couple times in between.
Yeah.
Can we put, can we put DPW in?
If there's something that you want on the 14, just either run it by...
See if DPW and Concom wants to come in, I guess.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah. Yeah, I was in, it's three weeks away.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of department head items, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
To work, anybody else at the moment?
No, if you want something, just send it, I mean, don't send it, just send it to me, so we don't send it as a group.
Well, do you have a...
Under C.
Under C. If there's no further input from anybody, I move that we go into non-public session under RSA 91A to C. And after we will be coming out, we will adjourn.
A second.
A second. All right.
Okay. All favorit?
Angie? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.